Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board meeting for Grand Blank Township Board of Trustees for Tuesday, October 18th. If we could all rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Clerk Robertson, would you call the roll?
I would be happy to. Trustee Hugo is absent. Trustee Fike?
Here.
Trustee Raridan?
Here.
Trustee White?
Here.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes, here.
Myself, I'm here. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Six members present. A quorum.
Thank you. And now I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda, if anybody has any suggestions.
Yep, so moved.
Okay. Motion by Dr. Raridan, support by Trustee Fike.
Okay, Trustee Fike. Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Six, nothing. Motion passes.
Thank you. And now we'll open the floor for public comment, if anybody has any comments they would like to make. Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. And at this time, we had scheduled a public hearing for Concord Green Special Assessment District. I know that we had a few challenges with regard to notification, but at this time, I'd like to discuss briefly a policy change. But first, I want Attorney Laddie, if you have any comments on that. I think we are looking at a resolution. Is that later on the agenda here?
We are. So later on in the agenda, what we want to leave the agenda item in place, and that's item F. And we are going to adopt a resolution numbered 22-23, and it's, but it's not going to create the Special Assessment District. It's going to re-notify or reaffirm that we've adjourned the public hearing until November 1st. And so I don't know if you have a copy of that in front of you or in your packet. I know that I can represent to you that it is a resolution that we adopted approximately a month ago or longer that set the public hearing for tonight's date. And the only thing different in that resolution is that we're going to bump it to November 1st.
Right.
And that's, those are the only comments I have, but...
So one of the things that we had discussed previously with regard to subdivision roads was a policy that the Road Commission had been considering, and it's been approved. And that is that they would set aside $500,000 for subdivision streets to be paved. What they, how they would dole that money out is basically, they would, if the township agrees to pay 10% of the cost of a subdivision paving project or Special Assessment District, then we could apply to receive 10% of the cost from the Road Commission, basically to match our 10%. That $500,000 is limited to $150,000 per township, and it's on a first-come, first-served basis. The money's going quickly. I spoke with Superintendent Limata about the project, or about that, the special assessment. If we were to, if we were to do that, provide that 10%, we'd probably take the money from what we have going towards our unfunded liabilities. I'm not sure that we'd meet the $150,000 threshold, but certainly this project here, Concord Green, Director Sears, what was the dollar amount that we'd be looking at on Concord Green if we were to do this project?
For the match?
Right.
It'd be $60,000.
60. There's the potential that we could have a few other Special Assessment Districts that would qualify yet this year.
There's three other petitions out right now.
Okay. Any idea how close the other ones are to being finished?
There's one that doesn't quite have half the signatures. They probably won't make the deadline. There's another one that's close, and I haven't been able to get a hold of the third one.
Okay. So it'd be about $60,000 for this, but you know, one of the, one of our goals as a board has been to get more subdivisions to move forward on paving projects. I think an incentive of covering 20% of the cost between the County Road Commission and township would help incentivize those projects to move forward. We've been doing a great job on the unfunded liabilities and making progress paying those down. So I would like the board to consider us moving forward to doing such a match, if possible, for projects. Yes?
This is like, almost like a 401K where your company provides the match and then, you know, gives you some money, and then you would match the rest?
Right.
So we would be getting free money if we did this, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
And it's first-come, first-served, so we're not guaranteed the money. If we move quickly, we can get some of it. So I think right now, out of the $500,000, I think we figured today, at a meeting today, and it, somewhere between $200,000 and $300,000 has already been committed through other municipalities. So we need to move quickly if we're going to do it.
Mr. Supervisor?
Yes.
We've discussed this issue briefly before.
You can speak into the microphone.
And, and you know my devotion to dealing with unfunded liabilities, of course, but in this situation, if we have an opportunity to get matched from the Road Commission in light of the costs associated with these projects, then I think that it should be pursued. I think we should find a way within our budget to be able to do that. And so when we have the, you know, the hearing, whether we, I don't know whether we're adopting anything tonight, but when we have the hearing on November 1st, I certainly would support, support that.
I wanted to make sure we got the input of our board members. Dr. Raridan, any thoughts?
The only question I would have is, the 10% is good, the match is good, but if somebody else in the, in the money is gone and they come forward with a project, are they gonna...
Right. Are they going to get funded?
Want the 10%, maybe not the county 10, because they won't be able to get that.
Right.
So I mean, that's something just to think about. I'm not opposed to it, but I'm...
You know, I wouldn't be opposed to that, just to be fair. Hopefully, we could get the county money, or...
Right.
Maybe we lean on the county to add some money to it.
Right.
I don't know. Any thoughts, Trustee Fike or Trustee White?
I think it's a great idea to go for the money that's there.
Mm-hmm.
I hadn't thought of what Jude mentioned, that, you know, other subdivisions may be coming forward and say, hey, you gave it to them, why can't you give it to us?
There is some talk, and I believe, you know, we have a couple of subdivisions that have schools within them. And one of the things that we're going to be able to do, I believe, is to use some of the allocation money that were given by the Road Commission towards those projects where, you know, that are on bus lines, what have you. So there's going to be some more funds available for some of those subdivisions that are in dire need of paving, like right across the road, and Sun Valley, a few others. So...
Couldn't we just say to those future subdivisions, look, the money's gone?
Well, yeah.
The match is no longer...
It's going to be an annual thing, though.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
All right.
So if they don't do it this year, they can get in on next year's.
Good to know.
You ready for that? Although, we're, what they are doing right now is for next year's, next summer's project, so that'd be a year from, but they have to be in by January, but I think the money's going to be gone sooner than January.
Yeah. Okay.
So anyways, if we have a consensus to do that...
Yes.
We'll direct Mr. Sears to let those individuals know that are circulating the petition, that they need to act quickly if we're going to get the funds. And right now, we'll stick with the match from the county and the township. I guess, I would rather leave it at that so that we get the petitions in quicker, so we don't say, well, if you don't get them in, you're still going to get, you know, X. But let's focus on trying to get them in so that they get the county money as well. So, good. All right, so we'll be back on this topic with Concord Green, November 1st, for their public hearing.
Correct. And then, and tonight, your resolution will just affirm that November 1st date.
Right. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Okay, number six, privileged presentation. We have Ashley Warner with us again this evening from Rose Pest Solutions, and she's going to provide an end-of-season mosquito update to the board. And with the snow flying, I'm not sure we're going to see a whole lot of mosquitoes right now. Yeah.
It's a different, different category. So for anybody that doesn't know, I'm Ashley. I run the mosquito program for Rose. This year was a pretty, I want to say typical year weather-wise. We had a spring melt that showed the same, you know, standing water that we saw not last year, but the previous years for us to start treating. We began treating the week of April 18th, putting the larvicide down in the standing water. We, this year, used 9,984 ounces of larvicide, which is about a third of what we used last year.
Oh.
And we used 5,584 bricks that stayed about the same, just because your guys' catch basins are about the same every year. So we had 477 calls come in, which again, is a third of last year. And we did 341 barriers, which is the same thing. Put in 750 hours, which again, turned out to be about a third of last year. So this year was a pretty typical year. As for weather, we had a dry July, didn't have a whole lot going on there. We didn't do very much of our fogging this year because we didn't have the need for it. The traps weren't high enough numbers to initiate the fogging, which is better environmentally anyway. The year before, we used 250 gallons. This year, we used two and a half, so.
Wow.
It really just depends on the adult population. It's a fly swatter, so we don't really want to be chasing our tail if we don't have to. And that's what we found this year. We were able to get a hold on it and did well. We completed six rounds of West Nile testing when we had samples available. We had no positive cases of the disease. We didn't have any in any of our townships that we service. And we continued to collect, or to check for samples and to check the traps Monday, Wednesday, and Friday for the whole season. And those were what we would have decided to fog off of if we had high enough numbers. So I think that's it for the overview.
So basically, because it was such a dry summer, mosquito population was down?
Yeah. I mean, I would like to take all the credit, but it just was not very rainy. The end of the season kind of, kind of concerned us a little bit, but we were able to get ahead of it, so.
Or maybe the mosquitoes are learning, don't come to Grand Blank Township.
I wish that was the case.
They've been told.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Warner? Yes, Mr. Fike?
Were there savings this year that we can pass on to next year?
Well, we try to base that out over the, over the life of the contract, because again, you never know. You could get, you know, 10 years of what we had last year. So there's, we used way more than we planned for last year, so it's kind of just a give and take there. We try to compensate for it, because you never know what the weather's going to be like, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
And I also did give him a USB drive that has all of our reports, call logs, basically everything that we did, if anybody ever needs to look at that, so.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Warner.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda, I'll ask if anybody would like to approve the consent agenda as presented, or make that motion.
A motion by Fike?
Fike, supported by Trustee White.
Supported by White. Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Six, nothing. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Under old business, with regard to our strategic plan, we plan to speak a little bit about the Saginaw Road Corridor this evening. We did have the ribbon cutting for the grand opening of Cinemom, which is located on the corner of Maple and Saginaw, and several of you were there, Trustee Fike, Clerk Roberts, and myself, and a well-attended event, but nice to see a new business moving into that spot. But Ms. Roberts has been working on a few different things with regard to the corridor. One of, we've got a few things at our place, so Melissa.
Good evening.
Good morning.
So the things that we have coming up for the Saginaw, which we need to just start calling it Point North Corridor, or Business District, we had someone design a logo for us for the Business District, and with the idea being that as you come into the township and our signs, when we do eventually get our signs, that we would have a placement underneath our signs with the businesses, designating it the Business District. The other thing is, we're going to have a meeting with the business owners in those districts. Some of them we've met with already, some we haven't. They're new, because we just created a larger district. So you all should have a copy of the logo. If you have any comments about that, I'd be happy to hear. And then also, the map with the, the district in it. Yes, sir?
There's a little parcel there in the middle. It looks like a parking lot or something. What is that?
So that is the, there's a trailer park that's north here, and so we try and keep as many residential out, or as much residential out as we can, and create just with the businesses. There will be some residential, but it has to be more than 51% businesses, so.
So one of the things that we want to talk about on this is the TIF district versus the authority. And while a TIF district requires an authority, to have an authority doesn't require you to have a TIF district.
Correct.
And so obviously, at least that's my understanding. So, so moving forward on the authority, no problem, but on the TIF district, I don't know if we wanted to have more discussion on that or consideration, but, David, any thoughts?
Well, no, you're exactly right. And one of, one of the things that you could, you would consider, and I think we've talked about this in the past, with the intention of setting up a TIF district, and Dennis cautions you wisely that if we do set up a TIF district, we are not going to have a lot of growth from increase in taxes over our base here in this area, because it's already established, and it will grow slower, and hopefully, we could, we can plant the seeds for its rehabilitation. But that isn't the only source of money. You could have, you could solicit donations, you could borrow money, you could bond for things. You don't necessarily have to have a TIF. I believe that probably there, there isn't, aside from the upfront costs and the administrative work, there is no reason not to have a TIF here, but you don't have to do it right off the bat, and you don't have to do it at all, at all, if you don't want to.
Mm-hmm.
So there are, there are all sorts of options for you.
Mr. Fike?
What would be the administrative costs for a TIF?
Well, we have to, what we normally do is, we're going to have to consult with, and I think with our DDA, we consulted with Row, where we have to set essentially an inventory of the properties, we have to set a baseline of the taxes, and then we actually have to have an actuarial provide sort of an estimate of the potential growth. And then, once we, once we have that plan, we're able to then go ahead and adopt the TIF and set our baseline, and then again, read the benefits of the growth. But I want to say we got the whole thing off the ground for maybe less than $10,000 with the DDA. And unlike the DDA, I mean, we, we, again, it took at least a year to recover some money in the DDA, but because of, of a lot of efforts by the Township Administration, we were able to hit the ground running. So it might be that if the Township loans the authority $15,000 and we spent 10, that might be a longer-term debt than it was with the DDA.
So Mr. Laddie, what, with the authority, we can borrow money for the, for the district. We can seek donations or grants, what have you. So the TIF, really, the benefit of the TIF is if we have increased taxable value, is where we're going to see the benefit from that.
Correct.
And that's really the only benefit we would see with the TIF, is if there's increased taxable value.
Correct.
Do we have, with, with the TIF, I know with the DDA, we had to have all the taxing entities agree to allow their tax dollars to come to the DDA instead of to their entity. How does that work with the TIF?
It's the same.
Is it?
Yep. You have to give them the opportunity to weigh in, and they did. We had great success at the DDA level, and I would hope that they would do this in this particular case, too. But again, you got to ask, well, and they have a chance to weigh in.
I would like to hope we have new development here, and the taxable value goes up. On the one hand, it makes me think, well, we'll have to work hard to make sure it does happen. On the other hand, it's, it's very, you know, developed already. There's some things that could use some redevelopment probably, and some repurposing of some, some locations. Whether or not that happens, I guess, you know, we don't control all of that, but... Mr. White?
Well, I mean, we've talked in the strategic plan about putting some sort of vacant commercial fee or register, I don't know exactly what we want to call it. I mean, to me, combining that with this would seem to be, together, they work very well. Independently, maybe not so much, but I mean, I would still support, obviously, creating the TIF. My only question is, I don't know, is that the GM plan on the bottom? Did we want to X that? I wasn't quite...
Yeah, we talked about carving out the GM property.
Just carve out in that map.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So you'd be in favor of having TIF and the authority? Mr. White?
Any thoughts from anyone on how we proceed with TIF or just the authority?
Can we start with the authority and then add the TIF later?
We, I mean, that's a possibility, I guess, right, David?
Yeah, that is a possibility. What I would suggest, well, and this is something I'll have to check on, but I would, we have a pretty, a pretty stretched-out notice requirement for the creation of the, of the corridor. And I would suggest that we go ahead and, and consider, I was going to say, we should maybe consider notifying, following the notification requirements as if we're creating a TIF, just so that we've, because, because there's like a 60-day review period and an opt-in period. And so unless, I guess, there's a, there's a way to fast-track our approval process, I think we should consider the long road and basically represent that we're going to create a TIF. Now, when we actually do create the baseline and create the study, we could hold off on that, but I think we ought to approach this, at least notice-wise, as if we're going to create a TIF.
I'm wondering, too, David, if we can, you know, take it and take a look at the baseline and the projections, and make our decision based on some of that, too, that if the projections are, you know, it's going to be incremental growth or whatever, we can decide at that point that, you know, we're not going to move forward any further than where we were and keep the authority.
And that's fine, too. And I don't, I don't want to speak for Dennis and the staff, but my impression would be that you guys, you guys have people in place that could create that sort of model fairly easily, frankly. And so that might be a good way to go. How about this? How about if, if you think that the map is a pretty good representation of, of the district? And I think it is, and again, you, you want to remember that it's primarily to rehabilitate a corridor, or in this case, we have Saginaw Street and/or Highway. We're making a commitment when we create the district or the corridor that we're saying, look, we, we recognize that this is an area that, that is primarily commercial. It does have a mix of industrial, it does have some residential, but our goals are going to be to try to facilitate growth. It will be primarily commercial growth. We're going to have to agree to, to facilitate sidewalks and non-motorized pathways where we can in this district. And we're going to have to agree to facilitate our zoning for mixed use and for elements of commercial, primarily, in my mind, that means non-conforming properties. We're going to have to kind of facilitate them for, for, for fast-track improvement. But if the map looks good to you, why don't we, why don't we go ahead and, and consider this, what we're going to move forward with? And then I'm happy to create a resolution for your consideration. Maybe we won't do it November 1st, but maybe, you have three meetings in November, I think.
Yes.
Maybe we can create a resolution for you to consider, and then I can get you the information as to what would, what would, the approval process with the TIF look like versus the approval process without a TIF, and see if there's a difference. And then you guys can mull that over, over the next couple of weeks to see where you land. And then if you think it's a good idea, maybe we'll have, I don't know if assessing could rough up some sort of, what a baseline would look like currently, and then what increase in taxes might look like.
I like that idea.
Is there a disadvantage to doing them together, just doing it all at once?
So I, I don't, again, aside from the administrative effort and the, and the cost of approximately $10,000, I don't really know what the, what the advantage would be to separate them, but...
Right.
I haven't thought about it in, from all sides yet.
Thing, wasn't there some concern that the TIF could have a negative balance or something if the property values decrease?
Well, it could, and all that would mean is that, I mean, whatever its, whatever its bank account is, it doesn't mean that, that the, that the authority can't move forward from other sources, right? It can't, it could still move forward with loans, it could move forward with donations. I want to, you might need to, to have some seed money come from the township, but I would, I would really be reluctant to, to be funding that corridor beyond bare essentials.
So the, the authority has the ability to set up or request Special Assessment District? Or how does that work?
Yeah, it does have the ability to do that. And it, it's very, they're very interesting, because they're independent entities, even though they're created by you, and their, their financial lifeline is the township. They have the authority to, they can create ordinances, they can create, they could request Special Assessment Districts. They don't, they can even, in DDAs, you can even propose millages and things. I don't think we would ever do that here, because that would sort of be contrary to purpose, but yeah, there are all sorts of...
But all those require the approval of the Township Board?
Yeah, and the way that we'll write those, and so what'll happen is, you'll, we'll create an ordinance, and we will, just like we did with the DDA, we'll tie as much authority to the Township Board as we can. Even though they're, they're technically autonomous, we want them to be, operate very close, closely with us.
Okay. I'm, I'm in favor of, we have a consensus on moving forward.
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, let's go with what you suggested, David.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Robertson? The ARPA funding that's on the agenda, there was some information in your packet with regard to an update on the ARPA funding. With regard to mission statement discussion, we, Ms. Roberts had sent out in the packet several examples. I'm not sure we want to try and hammer one out tonight. I don't think we brought our sleeping bags.
No.
So, Ms. Roberts?
You had suggested maybe...
Yes.
Putting a committee together, and I think that that's an excellent idea.
Right. So I'm going to draft a couple other board members and ask you to help to draft a mission statement to start with, and then we can see if we want to go to having a vision statement after that, but start with the mission statement or the Business District that we're talking about, the Point North Business District.
The mission...
Oh, no, for the...
For the Township.
The Township. The Township, I'm sorry. I'm getting my wires crossed here on the agenda, so...
And we'll just bring it back to the board for approval after, yeah.
Does everybody like the, the logo, too, that we came up with for Point North? Figured with the point being that, in this area, and people referring to it as the point, and this being the north part of the township, it suited it well. We've been tossing it around for a while, so... Okay, very good. Under new business, the board will hear a presentation on the proposed 2023 DPW budget. We have Director Sears here this evening to walk us through that.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Promise I won't take as long as our last budget presentation.
Your screen just went blank there, Sears. Okay, it's coming back, yeah.
Okay, so I am pleased to present to you tonight the 2023 Proposed Public Works Budget. We have a balanced budget for the next fiscal year. It includes a lot of capital projects, a lot of big purchases, and maintaining our operations to a very high level like we have done for several, several decades in the past. In the agenda packet, was a copy of the most updated budget. You received one previously on the DAS, so hopefully, you saw the updated copy in your packets. We'll just go through it kind of quickly, and I'll do a very high-level explanation of the budget. You've heard this presentation before, so I think we can get through it relatively quickly. Our revenues for this year are broke down, as shown on PowerPoint. 2% of our revenues are those of unclassified and general revenues, which are basically related to our banking and investments, inspections, plan reviews, so on and so forth, and reimbursement from the general fund for snow plowing, a little bit of building maintenance, so on and so forth. Water Department represents 53% of our revenues, which is basically water revenue, what we get from metering everybody's water.[1799.15] get from metering everybody's water. There's also meter sales. People pay us whenever, for the meters, whenever we install them or have to replace them. And then delinquent water usage, the delinquent fee that we put on bills. Sewer department represents 45% of the revenues for our department. Same thing, the biggest revenue source here are sewer rates. Changes for 22, or 2023, there are no change in our general revenues. Our water department, our water usage data shows us increasing slightly, year-to-year usually. It fluctuates, sometimes it goes down, sometimes it goes up. We have our model that we put together a few years ago, and it does a very good job of helping me predict what's going to happen because I don't have a crystal ball and it's very hard to, to predict that. We are proposing for the next fiscal year a 4% rate increase for both the water and sewer departments. As you know, we have a very aggressive capital program in the DPW. Some of the biggest projects, to highlight real quickly, our KCI sewer system, the new DPS facility and fire facility. We're looking at a new water tower. There are several sewer system expansions that we want to look at, some water looping projects. Our CIP is almost $28 million, so we have to keep that funded and keep a mechanism in place. As our township builds out, we can't rely on capital fees nearly as much. In the past, some of the rate increases we've received from Genesee County, we've absorbed instead of passing through to the township during some of our hardest times throughout the country, we were able to do that. Now we kind of have to play catch-up a little bit. Our rate model lays out what our rate increases should be from year to year, so making smaller incremental raises will help us from those 10% and 15% raises that, for instance, we saw from Genesee County just this past year. You know, they wait eight, 10 years to do an increase, and that, that hurts everybody a lot more than a 4% increase that might be $2 a month, for instance. So our appropriations for this year, they're broken down like this. Our administration budget, basically it pays for my staff, my administration staff that works here in Township Hall. It also pays for some light building maintenance on our facilities and vehicle maintenance. Inspections, we have one inspector that inspects all of our main projects, our mainline projects, any of the private development projects that you see, such as the Discount Tire that's being built, Grand Summit Apartments on Grand Blank Road. We have an inspector that's dedicated to going out there and watching an infrastructure be put in the ground so we know when that becomes public infrastructure, it was built to our standards and it will last. And then the water department and sewer department, the sewer, our water department is our biggest expense this year, and this, this chart will change annually because it includes capital projects. So as we take capital projects in and out of the operational budget, that number will change dramatically. I briefly just covered this, but this is the, what makes up the administrative budget of the DPW budget. And it's basically just the high level, anything that can't be split out between water or sewer falls into this one because, for instance, I manage both water and sewer departments. My salary is in this budget, along with my assistant director and some of our clerical Overall, if you look at the numbers in the budget, this has actually decreased by 10%. And again, it's because of that fluctuation in capital projects. The operational expenses in this budget have also decreased around 2%. So what I mean by that is whenever you look at that budget, remember, it includes capital costs. So when we take out those capital costs, those big dollar purchases or projects, you have what we operate on. So we've actually been able to decrease our operational budget this year by 2%. And we, that's stuff we have to keep doing in order to justify some rate increases and so on and so forth, to make sure that we're operating as efficiently, effectively as possible. Our capital expenses for this year in the administrative budget include the helping design the new DPS facility. We're, we're starting that now. And then our vehicles that we're purchasing this year, which are a new sewer CCTV truck, so what we use to televise the sewer lines, that truck is coming of age, it's outdated technology, so we need to look at replacing that. And then one of our international dump trucks is what we dig up sewers, waters with and also pave the roads with. Those are on a 15-year replacement cycle, so we have probably actually two trucks that are coming up, but we're going to do one this year and one next year. For our inspection department, this is all labor, basically. There's no other costs related to this. We have, like I said before, one inspector, so the only changes in there would be related to collective bargaining contracts would be stopper cost of living increases for their The water department includes three full-time service technicians. There's more staff in the sewer department because really the sewer department has a more aggressive maintenance schedule because of the cleaning and televising of our sewer system. So we have more labor dedicated to that department. It includes expenses for water, labor, software is a big one that we pay for every year because we have our asset management softwares, utilities for our different stations, materials, repairs and maintenance, and then of course, like I stated before, our CIP costs. Changes this year include what I just said, wages, the cost of water, we feel that will increase slightly as maybe we use a little bit more water. We're going to have to pay Genesee County for more water. Also, what we figure into that is what we call water loss. So every water system has a certain amount of, the unknown water usage that we don't account for with water meters. And we can usually tell you where that's coming from by projects. For instance, we painted a water tower this year. Every time we paint a water tower, we have to drain it completely, we have to fill it back up, then drain it completely again. That's a million gallons of water. All that's accounted usage that we have to pay, the water department pays for. So knowing that we have some projects coming up that we may use more water, we're going to be starting a water main flushing program, we're going to wa, flush the entire system this next year, we're going to lose a little bit more water. So we're going to count on that fee to Genesee County to go up. Includes capital projects, we have some water main looping that we did not get to complete this year, that hopefully we can complete next year. And then we have a couple of master meters that we need to add valves and change out valves on to make it safer for our technicians to work inside of those, those meter pits, basically. And then we're going to start the first phase of our water meter program, hopefully, which we couldn't do this year because we could not purchase water meters this year. Because of the state of our economy, it's almost impossible to buy water meters, even new houses, we've had to put off installing. Things are starting to pick back up a little bit, so I'm hopeful that in 2023, we can get a contractor going and start replacing some of our aging water meters, which will help with that water loss that I was talking about previously also. Because as water meters age, they slow down. They don't account for as much water usage as a brand-new meter would. For our sewer department, it accounts for seven full-time sewer technicians. It also accounts for sewage treatment that we pay to Genesee County, so they base that on the cost of water. Basically, anything we pay for water, they say that's what we pay for sewage treatment because when we flush a toilet, the water goes, that's how they read the meters, when the water goes down the drain, so on and so forth. Labor, repair and maintenance, contractual services, and then CIP. Again, the changes this year, wages, the cost of treating sewer, we think may decrease a little bit based on what our model is saying. We have increased contractual services from $30,000 to $200,000 to pay for some sewer CIP projects. That's basically the engineering that we're going to pay Row to design the projects. And then our capital projects this year, $1.3 million is set aside for that Grand Blank Road bypass, which we've talked about previously. And then hopefully, if King's Point is successful in collecting their petitions for new roads, we'll be able to install some collector system in that subdivision. And basically what that is, is we, we know that we have some INI, we've heard inflow and infiltration before into our sewer system of stormwater, basically sump pumps. A sump collector system will provide enough storm sewer for those residents to be able to hook their storm, sump pumps and their drains into that system rather than hooking them into our sewer system, which will ultimately save the entire township money down the road, maybe even prolong the life of the road. So we'll be looking at that if those petitions are successful. That's probably the only way we're going to be able to get that installed at this time is if the road is being tore up. It would, you know, triple the cost of the project for us to go and do it now, knowing that we have to cut the road open to extend leads, so on and so forth. So our capital improvements are somewhat funded by capital fees. Like I said, every year we budget $450 for both the water and sewer fund revenues. That's what I anticipate we're going to collect. Next year, I anticipate we're probably going to collect a lot more than that because we're seeing the development of Enterprise Park, and we're also hearing rumblings of Tech Village being successful. There's some apartment complexes, but I always budget conservatively in this because I can't count on this revenue, basically. And this is going to help offset those big-ticket-dollar capital projects that we've been talking about. So we have a lot of projects coming up, as long as they all come to petition, we should be able to fund them nicely, fund the infrastructure. And that's it. Hopefully it was short and sweet. I can answer any questions you might have.
So, Mr. Sears, one of the things that's interesting, you know, the point you bring up as far as, you know, the, the capital, well, not the expenditures, but capital fees that new development pays to us, and also an apartment building or even, you know, take for example, one of the hotels, the REUs that they have to pay are enormous for like a hotel. But those capital fees that they pay to us actually, we'll say subsidize a lot of costs for our water and sewer system for everybody.
Right.
So it really takes the burden off all the residential users when we have something like that come in. The challenge is, is that as we get further built out, the amount of those capital fees that we're collecting for new development are going to become less and less, and the burden of maintaining our system and replacing it and what have you is going to be on all the current users. And so therefore, like you said, it's better to have these incremental increases than wait for the day where maybe we have a year with very little development, yet we have some major capital expenditures that we have to make, and then we have to come up with a huge. We've seen that in other communities where, you know, they have a major issue with their sewers or water, and all of a sudden they have to find, you know, $100 million, and it's just not there.
I've worked in other communities like that, where we've had, you know, just a, a water system that we were fixing main breaks daily, and there was just no money to replace the water system. So after I left there, they ended up with 28% water and sewer rate increases because they just didn't plan for it.
Right.
And unfortunately, that's what happens.
And some of the other factors, you know, that I think for everybody to consider, I, with being on the Kira Gandhi Water Authority and then also with Genesee County Water and Waste Advisory Board, you know, the utilities, you know, the electricity and natural gas, whatever we use for powering everything from our generators to our pumps, the cost of, you know, everybody take a look at the utility bill and you'll see that your electricity and gas bill is continuing to rise and, and the water being pushed through our system doesn't happen for free. So that's driving some costs both here in the county as well as locally. You know, the other thing driving up the cost on the sewerage is the PFAS regulations that, I think we've talked about that before, that PFAS is in just about everything, everything from your clothing to carpeting, whatever, and as you wash your clothes, that PFAS gets into the, into the sewer. Well, the problem is that they're now requiring us at the county level to remove all that, and so they're having to develop systems for being able to do that, which costs an arm and a leg to build those. And unfortunately, you know, there's no money press, it's, the money comes from our, our ratepayers, and so that's driving up the cost of sewer rates as well.
Right.
But, you know, and I see people commenting online, I don't blame them, you know, saying, wow, you know, you'd think we're surrounded by the Great Lakes, the water would be cheap. Actually, we're seeing the cost of water around the country go increasing steadily and even more so out west, but even in the Midwest here, it's not free, you know?
Well, just remember the water free, what, the water is free, it's the cost of delivery.
Yeah, there you go.
It costs money to get it from Lake Huron or from groundwater to your tap.
And to clean it and make sure it's.
Correct, absolutely, right.
Any concern, yes, Mr. White?
I have a couple of questions for Jeff. You mentioned that new water tower. I know you've told us before, but refresh my memory, where will that be? Why is that needed? What is that again?
So right now, we're targeting the area of Hill and Belcy for it. It could go any way up and down Belcy Road, basically towards Burton or that Hill and Belcy area. Right, what we have basically is that the whole northern section of our township, basically north of the city of Grand Blank, is served by the water tower behind Township Hall. As the township was, has been built out over the years, that water tower is really too small. It can't maintain enough pressure throughout the entire system. There is enough pressure, don't get me wrong. There is nobody that is below regulated limits or anything, but our residents are accustomed to a certain PSI. If you have a two-story home, 50 PSI, you're not taking a very nice shower that night in your second-story bathroom.
Got it.
So as we've been updating our reliability study, we've noticed that those areas, especially the east side, northeast portion of the township, are declining in pressure, declining in water flows, so we need to basically create another water district and install a water tower there so that everybody can have same consistent pressure through gravity. We are currently talking with the city of Burton because there is a portion of Burton where the water comes in off of Maple Road into our township, and then when the pumps shut off at Genesee County, when they satisfy the level of our towers, we then push water back into Burton and keep their pressure up in their areas. So we are talking to them right now and being a partner with us with the water tower, and that's going very well. So they, they want to see their system improve also.
Imagine for firefighting purposes, the water.
Will also stabilize fire flows. Not that there's an issue with flare flows right now, but we, we need to make sure that that's consistently available throughout our community.
I think what the ladder truck uses is about 2,000 per minute or 2,000?
2,000 gallons per minute.
Right. And our current model is showing that we can serve anywhere from 2,500 to 3,000 gallons a minute, but.
So some of the stranded costs are for firefighting, too.
Absolutely. So the fire department will be on hook for the majority of the costs. No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, 2,000 gallons a minute, that's a lot of water.
Couple more.
Yes. So would that project start, that water tower, in 2023?
We're, I'm hoping that we can start it in late 2023. By the time we get it designed and permitted, I'm hoping that we can commence that in late 2023. But it would, right now, the costs are planned in 2024.
Got it.
So if I can get that ahead of schedule, we'll be coming back to the board for an amended budget.
The other thing driving up cost is just like you said, meters, pipe, all the materials, the cost is just skyrocketing.
Absolutely.
Water main break, I mean.
Yep.
Yes, Mr. White? Also, quickly, you, you're not adding any new employees this year?
No, we are not.
Okay.
We, we have, we have existing positions in our budget that have not been filled, that we may try and fill, but they're already budgeted for. We're not adding any new positions to the budget this year.
And the 4% increase, how much was the increase last year?
It was, there was a 4% sewer increase last year. We did, we have not increased water rates for several years. We actually lowered water rates three or four years ago, and then they went back up to 704 shortly thereafter. So this is actually the first major water increase, I say major, 4%. It, it affects somebody's water bill $2 a month on a 2,000 cubic feet per quarter, so.
So the ready-to-serve charge has increased a couple of years ago, right?
The, the ready-to-serve fee, we, we changed that. It was, it used to be one fee for everybody. We changed that to a graduating scale so that it was a different fee per size of meter. Because the theory there is that the bigger the meter you have, the, the more water demand you may have, so the, the more you pay for your ready-to-serve, basically.
Okay, good. Thank you. And that's great news that decreased your operational cost by 2%. That's fabulous.
That's just something we have to consistently look at because the enterprise fund, it, it maintains itself. Our revenues are borne by our services and our operations have, have to be reliant on our revenues. I, I. I pay a water and sewer bill here, so I don't want to see my water and sewer bill go up either. So it's important that we keep our operations efficient so that we can try and keep our utility rates as reasonable as possible.
Okay, very good. Any other questions for Director Sears? Okay, thank you very much. Very good presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, item B, the board will consider a motion to approve, for approval, for renovation work at the Baldwin Road Fire Station and awarding the bid to E&amp;L Construction in a not-to-exceed amount of $1,457,300. We have with us Chief Burdette. Good evening.
Good evening. How is everyone?
Very good.
First, I'd just like to start off with last Friday night. Chris Keller, Lieutenant Keller, completed his Staff in Command class at Eastern Michigan University, which is a little over 360 hours of training over the last nine months. Has a major research project, and he did a fantastic job with that, so I wanted to recognize him for doing that. All right, so back in 2020, COVID struck, and we were with social distancing, forced to split our crews. So we started manning the Baldwin Road Station at least 16 hours a day. And out of that, we noticed that we were able to respond to calls within two to three minutes sooner than what we had in the past. We brought that here to the board, and Superintendent Lemata noticed or recognized that ARPA funds could be used to purchase or pay for renovations to the station. We had an estimate of around $450,000, none at that time. During the March meeting, the board approved Spicer Group to do the architectural work for the renovations at Station Number Two. At that time, it was acknowledged that we... That the cost was increased, about $450,000 was kind of light. He said we should be looking at close to $850,000. Well, today I'm bringing to you the request to award the construction bid over to E&amp;L Construction for $1,457,300. The increase cost, as we kept going through and looking at the station, the increase cost came from building a brand-new roof on it. Needs that to cut down on the ice and snow buildup. A new generator for the station. Because the generator that's out there is 30-some-odd years old, it needs to be replaced, and one that can handle the entire station. So I'm asking for $1,457,300, not to exceed that, through E&amp;L Construction.
Yes, Mr. Fike?
Are they local, E&amp;L?
Yes, they are local. They're here in Flint. Some of their local work that they've done, I have some information from our architect. The Sloan Museum of Discovery was done. MTA storage facility over here, Maple and Dort, and also the new Genesee County Juvenile Justice Center. Just some examples of them done recently.
Yes.
So you're... This is fire station, is it number two? Is that what we call this out there on Baldwin Road?
Yes, yep.
Okay. You're replacing the roof on that?
It needs to be replaced, yes.
Does it really?
It has been leaking, and it is in bad shape. Just this last winter, when we had the windstorm last year, it took some of the roof off.
Because I was there when we put that on.
Yeah, unfortunately, well, it's 30 years old.
And it was never quite right.
Yes.
I mean, there were flaws.
Yeah. So it's been leaking, you know, the station's been unmanned, so a lot of people don't recognize it. Now it's manned, and it needs to be replaced.
Part of the reason was we had a crummy roofing contractor that put it on originally.
Oh, okay.
My opinion, that's...
So you're aware that it needs to be replaced, then? So it's, you know, unfortunate that costs have risen so much. I'm not sure, you know, how we not do this. I mean, we need a fire department that's able to be usable and going to be able to move us into the next, you know, 30 years. So I'm not sure how we get by without doing it. Is, you know, if we're looking at the dollar amount and saying, wow, this is a huge increase. Unfortunately, everything has skyrocketed. And the place is becoming unusable over, you know, slowly over a period of time. And the health and safety of our firefighters is also, you know, a concern with the situation that we have going on there.
What we were afraid of is if we cut back on the standard, that the station would not be able to last for any length of time.
Right. So any thoughts, concerns? Everybody good with moving forward on it?
It's budgeted for.
Yeah.
Is a motion in order, Mr. Supervisor?
Yes.
And I will make that motion.
Okay, supported by Trustee Fike.
Right, okay. Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Six-nothing, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item C, the board will consider a motion authorizing the purchase of ADA-compliant bleachers at bicentennial ballfields from Sinclair Recreation for the cost of $128,793.60 as part of the planned upgrade to bicentennial park ballfields. We have with us Director Lenihan.
So this project is a project that we're working with Genesee County through CVB funds. They will be giving us $100,000 towards this project. What we will be doing in this, and if you remember back a couple of meetings, we did the engineering for this project. And what we will be doing is we'll be installing some accessible parking spots on both sides of the parking lot. And we will be adding a paved pathway down to the lower quad, fields seven through 10. And we'll also be pouring cement slabs and have accessible bleachers at fields two through 10.
Just... Yes, okay, you're making it?
I have a...
Okay, sure, go ahead.
We're tearing out the existing bleachers?
Yes.
Okay, good, because just at kickball, one of the people on my team, the bleacher literally broke when they were on it. So we also have a liability issue there.
Right.
I'm glad we're getting away with them. I'll second the motion.
Okay. So we... Fike, supported by White.
Motion by Fike, supported by White.
I agree that the backstops look very good, but time for the bleachers are overdue, so glad we're getting them.
We'll be looking at the backstops in the upper quad next year also.
Okay.
All righty. Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Six-nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Item D, the board will consider a motion approving the purchase of new picnic tables and grills for bicentennial park from Pilot Rock for $15,729.
So we didn't do it this last year, and we're actually using some funds from last year and this year. But two years ago, we went out and we purchased 20 picnic tables, regular picnic tables, and I believe five ADA-accessible picnic tables. A lot of the wood picnic tables that we have out at the park, some of them are 20 years old or older, and they're rotting and just becoming a safety hazard. The picnic tables that we put in now, they have heavy-duty frames that have lifetime warranties on them and come with treated lumber. We're also looking at doing some larger-capacity grills at the pavilions for people that have the rentals.
Very good. Looking at the quotes, it looks like the grills and the picnic tables are very nice. Any thoughts, concerns, questions, Ms. Lenihan? Motion is in order if somebody would care to make that. Mr. Fike makes the motion, supported by Mr. White.
Okay. Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Six-nothing, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Item E, the board will consider a motion to approve a Building Department document scanning project to Graphic Sciences for $85,925.40 and authorize the Township Superintendent to execute all related contracts and documents. Director Sears is here with us.
Hello again. So before use a proposal tonight to begin scanning some of our historical road plans that we have up in the very scary attic in the garage here attached to this building. Basically, anytime a building is constructed here and our Building Department issues a permit for it, we keep the plans for that, the approved plans, and they're all in boxes that we have to retrieve occasionally. It's a very dangerous endeavor to do that. So we are looking to begin scanning those plans. Graphic Sciences did the first phase of our scanning in the Building Department. All of our historical permits have been scanned into our on-base system. So now our inspectors and our clerical staff can access that right from their computer instead of shuffling through filing cabinets full of paper. So this... The project is... The bid was $85,925. We have $65,000 a year this year and next year to get this project done. So we're hoping to start this year, this fall, get as much done as we can, and then move into next year and finish it up so that we can basically get rid of those old documents. Right now, they are storing our old permits. Hopefully, we'll be able to get those back from them and have those destroyed also, so.
Okay. Any questions, concerns, thoughts? Yes, Treasurer Kilmer?
This is for scanning the building permits?
Rolled files. So the rolled plans, the big sets of plans that are rolled up in the...
Right.
That the permits have already been scanned, the historical permits.
Is it necessary to save these, these big... Is it...
If you have a, if you have a good electronic retention schedule and you can prove that our systems are going to be backed up and accessible well into the future, then you can get rid of the hard copies. We have not done that yet because our IT department is just coming into its own, and they're building our IT system now with a lot of redundancy. So hopefully, in the future, we'll feel that our electronic files are secure enough. We can get rid of that.
Well, we do need to keep a copy of these, so, I mean, the electronic version.
Right. As long as we have the electronic version and we can ensure that it's accessible well into the future, then we can get rid of the physical copy.
But it's something that we have to have, we need to be able to refer to.
Absolutely. We have to keep them forever.
Okay, I was just wondering why.
Yeah, and eventually, maybe they'll be available on a laptop to our firefighters as they're heading towards the building. They can see what the blueprints...
That is a thing with our on-base system. The way it's intended to be developed is anybody who were for the township or has access, will be able to access it, be able to, you know, type in a parcel number and address and pull up those files.
So any of our first responders.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, so a motion's in order if we're in agreement.
Well, I'll make that motion, Mr. Supervisor.
Actually, Dr. Raridan had his hand up to make the motion.
Able, then I'll second his very fine motion.
And Mr. Kilmer had his hand up to second it.
Well, I think I'll just keep my mouth shut. That was it. Okay.
I was clear that I wasn't.
Oh, sure. And seconded by Kilmer.
You're fine.
All right. Okay, Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes, thank you.
Six-nothing, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sears. Item F, the board will consider Resolution 22-23 to create a special assessment district for resurfacing certain roads in the Concord Green subdivision. Mr. Laddie?
This is what we talked about earlier. We're not, we're not having the public hearing tonight, but we are rescheduling it for November 1st. And Ms. Roberts has made some copies of the resolution. I'll present them to the clerk if...
Yeah, if you would.
If you are ready.
Thank you very much. Is it one for every member?
There is not. There are three.
Well, we had it previously in our pack, but the only thing that's changed is the date, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
Everybody's good with the change.
Very good.
Would you like to make the motion, Director Raridan?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Supported by Mr. Fike.
Okay, motion by Raridan, supported by Fike. Okay, Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer, Kilmer, excuse me, yes. Supervisor Bennett? Six-nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, the next item, unfortunately, we're going to be losing Director Lenihan as our park director. And item G, the board will recognize Parks and Rec Director Patrick Lenihan for his efforts in improving the Parks and Recreation Department during his tenure. Come on up, Director Lenihan. So when Mr. Lenihan was hired, I know that we had a little bit of turmoil going on, and we appreciate you living through all that and working through it. And really, we also had just taken over the Parks and Recreation Department. And so really, it was a learning curve on our part, and just a whole lot of different pressures coming in here. So just to deal with that, I want to say thank you for helping us to stabilize our Parks and Rec Department and get it off the ground. How many years has it been now, Patrick, that you've been here?
Almost three.
Almost three?
Yep.
Okay.
And for the people on the board that don't know, you know, this date might resonate with you. But March 23rd, 2020, my first day on the job, we had to close down the office. And I remember this very well. I turned around to our assistant director and ended up getting some information because I hadn't even made it out of the building yet. You know, I wasn't sure, you know, what we had at the senior center, who we had. So, you know, from day one, it was a very interesting start.
Yeah, so between us not having a superintendent for the township office and then also with COVID and basically losing our funding because of COVID because our funding was based on lots of participation, there were lots of challenges coming at us. But with that being said, it didn't stop us from accomplishing a lot of great things. So we've accomplished so much with our Parks and Rec under your leadership, and I think you've set us in a great direction. So I don't know if everybody knows where we're going, but I guess we're okay to say that now, right?
Yep.
So Patrick's going to be the deputy director, do I have that title correct? With the Genesee County Parks and Recreation Department. So it's been a great, you know, commentary on you and your career. And I think we don't mind being the training ground for some people, but, you know, we don't want everybody to leave us. But, and we're sad to see you go, but we appreciate all the great things you've done here, so.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank the board and the community for the support. This community does value the opportunities that, you know, we can provide through quality recreation spaces and programs. You know, we started doing more community events to get that sense of place within the community. And, you know, I'm proud of what we accomplished here.
One of the things you helped us with is, you know, one of the things that we've been trying to do is get grants for a number of years, you know, for our pathways. And when we brought Patrick on, one of the first things I identified was a cell phone tower. Well, you know, $20,000 to our parks, you know, nice little check every year. However, we found out that it was also making us lose about 50 points on the application for any grant that we were applying, basically eliminated us from the running of any major grant for our pathways. And so Patrick was able to help us try and mitigate that. And while we're working on, over the last couple of years, trying to mitigate that by looking for other properties that would help offset the property that we devoted for the cell phone tower, turns out that the DNR, I don't know, maybe had something to do with them changing the rules, but...
I'd like to think so.
Yeah. So anyways, it changed the rules a little bit, and in the meantime, so we're not going to have that to contend with in the future. So it'll help us with some grant writing ability, so. Thank you for all those types of things, Patrick, that you brought to us and your knowledge base, so.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Okay, next item on the agenda is item H, and the board will consider a motion authorizing a stipend of $200 per week to Parks and Recreation Director Athletics and Programming, Sonja Lemata, while performing the additional duties as acting Parks and Recreation Director effective October 23rd, 2022 until the position is filled. And we have Ms. Lemata here this evening. I think everybody knows Sonja. evening. I think everybody knows Sonja. But we're very fortunate to have somebody as capable as Sonja on our staff. And actually, Sonja was the interim director, I think, when we first started. I'm not sure for how long, but it was for several months, right, before Mr. Lenihan came on? So, what's that?
I think it was like a month, maybe a couple of weeks.
Okay, all right. Well, we're very fortunate to have you, so.
Is a motion in order, Mr. Supervisor?
It is.
Then I will make that motion if you'll permit.
Supported by Mr. Fike.
Motion by myself, supported by Fike. Okay. Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Six, nothing. Motion passes.
Okay. Anything for future agenda items we want to make sure we cover? Like, we're going to be pretty busy between the, the business district and everything else in our strategic plan, but.
The only thing, going over the budgets, I mean, I think I'm to approve them and get that off the.
Okay. I believe we're scheduled to start moving forward on the budget in the next meeting, right, Mr. Roberts, or?
It's not that I'm going to be talking about.
So that'll be.
Okay.
So we'll be able to move forward on it in November, probably wrap it up. Good point, Dr. Raridan. Okay, moving on to board reports. Mr. White, anything with regard to CBA?
Our October meeting is canceled next week. No, there's nothing on the agenda.
Okay. Good. Anything with Metro Alliance, Mr. Fike?
They will be meeting tomorrow, and Baldwin Road improvements are among the many things on their agenda.
Very good. Dr. Raridan, anything with regard to police? Okay. Treasurer Kilmer, anything?
No.
Clerk Robertson, how's the election coming?
We have processed a little over 8,000, well, we put, we sent out 8,000 absentee ballots so far. And they, it's humming like a well-oiled machine. Give credit to Lynn and the staff for everything that they're doing. They're working hard. They worked, they worked this weekend and, and things are moving along nicely.
Okay, very good. With regard to 911, just an update on the 911 consortium, we've actually been crunching a lot of numbers, along with a few others, a couple other municipalities. And we actually are going to sit down with the director of 911, along with their IT person, and just go over what our numbers show and make sure that they're in order before we provide them to the consortium members, just to make sure that our numbers are in order. And so we'll be doing that. I believe we might do it beginning of next week, is what we're looking at. So we'll keep you posted on that. The other item I had was with regard to the 10% from matching, and I think we've covered that earlier. So with that, Attorney Laddie, anything you'd like to cover?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Well, very good. A motion to adjourn is in order then. Making that motion, Dr. Raridan? Supported by Treasurer Kilmer? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
We are adjourned at 8:14 PM.